I'll call the public hearing to order. This is a public hearing for a minor amendment to a subdivision permit for property owner Tyler C. Gordner located at 1 Jack Frost Lane. This is an amendment to permit 2021-03, primarily for the installation of a new access road from Route 155. Participation in this hearing is a prerequisite to the right to take any subsequent appeal. If you wish to make a public comment, but do not have the ability to comment in person, I'm going to skip that since you're all here. And that's it. Okay. So the applicant today is represented by his attorney. I'm sorry, Mr.?
David Cooper.
David Cooper.
Hi, guys. I'm here as well. Alair's on the phone.
Who's that?
Alair, I'm Tyra's wife.
My client.
Thank you. Hold on one second. We're adjusting our volume here.
No, no problem.
That was a good test for us. Thank you.
You're welcome. It was a test for me to get on, so I'm glad I did.
All right, let's try that.
Can you give us one more test of your voice?
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Could you just state your name for the record? I think you said you were Tyler's client.
Absolutely. Yeah, Alair C. Gordner.
Mr. Cooper, I just have a quick question because I don't see an authorized agent specified on the subdivision application. So is there anything that I'm missing that maybe Ms. C. Gordner could validate that Mr. Cooper is the attorney for the applicant? Ms. C. Gordner, are you able to confirm that your attorney?
Yes, absolutely. I apologize. I didn't know if you were asking David or me. Yes, he is our attorney and he was just representing us since we couldn't be there. Yes.
Okay. He's authorized to speak for you if necessary.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Marie and Bruce Pecat. We're also on.
Hi, thank you. I'll ask you in a moment to introduce yourself as we go through the interested parties. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Anything you want to say now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
We'll wait for a moment then. First, I'll ask for any disclosures of conflict of interest or ex parte communications from board members. Anything to disclose?
Not by me.
Not by me.
Not by me.
Nope. Okay, so hearing none, we'll move on. For all of you who are not familiar, the definition of interested persons is defined by Vermont Statute 24 VSA, Section 4465, Paragraph B. And if you have received a letter, you're very likely an interested party. We're going to now ask for anyone to identify themselves as a potential interested party and we'll discuss whether or not that's appropriate. I see two will start on Zoom. We have Marie and Bruce. Is that right?
Correct.
Correct. Yes.
Would you both like to be identified as interested parties in this matter?
Yes.
And you are abutting landowners?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on whether or not they are or may be considered interested parties in this? I think it's pretty clear that they meet the requirements. Okay. Unless there's any disagreement, you are identified as an interested party. You'll both be identified as interested parties for this proceeding. Ms. Boudreaux, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Are you interested or are you, do you intend to be identified as an interested party in this proceeding?
Yes, and my husband Edward Burgess is here with me also.
Christine Boudreaux and Edward Burgess. And you are abutting landowners to the property in question?
Yes, we are.
Does anybody have any concerns about their status as an interested party?
On the sheet.
They're on the sheet. So, okay, taking no disagreement, you will be identified as interested parties. Is there?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone here in person that would like to be identified as an interested party? Okay, we don't need any deliberation now. We've done that. So I'll ask either the applicant or your attorney to say a few words about the proposal and what your intentions are and what you're asking this commission to approve. Who would like to take that?
I'll go first, just so our budding neighbors can hear exactly from us what we're trying to do, so there's no confusion. We are literally just trying to cut in an entranceway from Route 155 to our duplex area, which is where our family will be staying if or when they do come visit us. And we just want to clear a little bit of the area there just to literally make a small, basically driveway. And that's all we want to do. And we, like you guys are aware, we went through VT Trans first to get the approval just because as homeowners, we just thought that was the correct way to do things just because it was on Route 155. So we thought that was the obvious answer to get an approval from the state because it was on the state highway. So we got that approval and then that's when everything kind of snowballed into, you know, obviously you guys have to do it your way and the rules of Mount Holly, which we also want to follow. So that's basically where we're at right now. But that's all we want to do is just cut in a little entranceway to the duplex and nothing more.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add? No, unless you have questions. Okay. I just want to, before we jump into the next item here, I just wanted to clarify something just from my understanding. The duplex that you mentioned, the drive will access that structure. Is that your current dwelling?
Yes, it is. We're on the left-hand side of the duplex because we are waiting to move into our home on the back of the property, which you guys saw.
Okay, yeah, because you mentioned something about visitors, so I was curious. So you're currently occupying the duplex, but your intention is to move to another structure on the property?
Correct, correct. And we will still obviously have the duplex. So that's what we mean when we say visitors, meaning if people do want to come up, we have an area for our family to be. So, and that's the reason why we want to do the separate driveway, just so that there is no, you know, there's not a lot of traffic or confusion going into the other driveway, which is already there.
The driveway, the other driveway being the driveway that accesses the shop or whatever.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Just clarifying one other thing that was discussed, both I think onsite and in communications with Faith. Your desire or intention is to kind of have a no net, no increase in sort of gravel area, no new drives. So like in other words, the new drive that accesses 155 would allow you to kind of discontinue the drive that goes from the shop to the duplex. Is that, is that your understanding?
That's 100% correct.
Okay. I think that was how we described it earlier. I don't think we have that in writing anywhere. I just want to make sure that was on the record, that the intention is to have kind of a no net increase in quote unquote paved, you know, gravel area to sort of replace the drivable way from the shop to the duplex with a new access to 155?
Yes.
And just to close the loop on that other part about the duplex, is it your intention to retain the duplex or will you be selling that?
Retain. 100% retain.
All right, gotcha. Okay, I'm just going to go through, so that was sort of the oral part of this. We have information you've submitted written, in written format electronically. And I just want to go through that to make sure we have everything that you want us to have. We have a permit from the state for the access to 155.
Yep.
VT Trans permit, okay. We have, I guess it's probably a drawing you submitted along with that permit, an access plan that identifies and sort of like drawn in where the new, approximately where the new drive will be.
Yes.
See what you're looking at.
There is a color version. Yeah, here it is. And so that will be important because, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't really have any other survey or plat or drawing that shows where the drive will be. So if this is approved, we will need a way to sort of describe it. And the best way to do that would be this access plan map. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That's what we have.
Okay, because just to view the recorded survey, that was a product of the subdivision permit and hearing, does not show that drive, obviously, because that was some years ago. So we'll rely on this access plan to describe the new access.
I think that's fair, as long as it's made to be approximate because that is hand drawn and obviously it's surveyed. I did a quick sort of offhand measuring tool on Google. It's about 150 feet it looked like. Alair, does that sound about right, 100 feet north of Jack Frost?
Yes, and we actually put stakes out there. There's stakes right exactly in the location of where we are planning to do it.
Okay, so we can say approximately 150 feet from the center line of Jack Frost Lane.
I think I did the edge or something, but anyway, approximately would look like.
Plus or minus?
Yes.
Minus, correct.
Yes.
100 feet or whatever.
That's fine.
All right. Faith, is there anything else that is sort of relevant as a piece of, as an exhibit for this that we may want to look at in our deliberations afterwards?
Well, only the VT Trans permit.
Well, the entire set of documents in the VT Trans permitting, yeah.
Yep. And of course, the other important aspect which has brought us here is the earlier findings and decisions.
Right, that's a good thing to mention.
2021, which sets out the conditions of the original subdivision.
Right, that's true. So as another exhibit, we'll be including our original findings and decision from 2021 that is subject to amendment. I think that's it. Do we have anything else that we think is relevant as a physical exhibit?
The only thing I'd like to mention, if it's okay, and Alair catch me on this, but the plan that they're looking at that was submitted, it was a little confusing to me because it mentions a subdivision and a line, but that's not on, that's not before this commission currently. So I just want to make that clear. Is that, is that fair, Alair?
Yes, absolutely.
That did confuse us initially, right?
I do have a plan that might be helpful, but my clients haven't seen it yet. But it's a clean, it's a clean map that just shows essentially where it is without that. But if, if you want to just use what they've submitted and just, I guess, you can mark.
You have it where?
What's that?
You have it on your computer?
I have it right here, but I just, I want to show my client on the film just to make sure that she's comfortable with it, but I'll just.
So we can zoom in pretty tight. I mean, we wouldn't necessarily, are you able to zoom in on this if I move it?
Yeah.
Is there a position I can?
Where's the camera?
They're everywhere.
Usually if I move out of the way, Will.
Yeah, there we go. We're in.
Do you want to take a picture and text it to her?
If I have service, I'd be happy.
We do have Wi-Fi here, but.
I was going to say, I hope you guys have Wi-Fi.
I think just to be 100% clear, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that although the parcel map and access plan shows a dotted line as a proper subdivision boundary, there is no pending application before the commission for an additional subdivision at this time?
Correct.
Correct? This is only about the access drive to the duplex?
Yes, that is it. Yes.
Right, and also, so amending the permit conditions to allow an access. Right, so that's the question primarily is not just that the permit for, from the state is done for access to 155, but our, at least my view of our permit is it does not allow for that access at the moment. So we will have to amend the decision from 2021 to allow that access. So I think that's the primary question for this commission is amending those conditions. So, all right, I think we have a full complement of our written exhibits here.
I just, I forwarded the photo and we'll see if, Alair, just let us know if you get that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, it's pretty cool. I would say it's about the same. It does have that figure of 152 feet. I think if we, this might be better to use just because it's already in this, it can be referenced as exhibit to the state.
Yeah.
We could just say exhibit whatever to the state permit. It would be easier to reference from, anyway, so.
Yeah, whatever you reference to state permit, it's attached to it.
It's attached to the state permit already, so.
This one is?
This is.
Perfect, so I'll just take that back and you guys don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, I think it's probably easier just to reference that since it's recorded for posterity with the state.
And we're all clear that there's no actual request for a subdivision?
Yeah, it's under me. Okay, so any questions from the commissioners that we haven't already asked? Andrew?
I almost had that.
I just wanted to state, I guess the obvious, because I've said it, is the only reason we needed to have another subdivision meeting was because of the conditions that we put on, on the original subdivision.
That's not what he said. No, it's not what he said.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons.
All right.
The access is part of the original plat. We've, we've sort of waived the need to produce a brand-new plat and survey because of the cost involved. Right, Alair, you understand that, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we've asked you not to do that because it can be quite costly. Those are the two things, the access and the conditions, primarily on the boundaries of the parcel.
Okay, because I thought it was directly related to the, one of the restrictions, which says a vegetative buffer shall be maintained between 155 and the telephone electric drive away, since they have it.
That is potentially one of the conflicting conditions.
Right, so I guess my next question is, is there a reason we're maintaining the, I'm going to call them, these restrictions or covenants?
We haven't got there yet.
Okay, then I'll wait.
So I'm understanding that you have, you will raise a question on whether we should maintain those restrictions. Okay. I have a question.
Yeah. I'm looking at the original plat and of course, I don't have the benefit of precise measurements, but just comparing that with the illustration showing where the new access drive will be, I'm just curious where the contractor's shop, as shown on that, is in relation to the, what is indicated on the plat as the proposed primary replacement trenches for the septic system on Lot 1? Because superficially, they look to be in more or less the same place. I'm just curious.
This building wasn't there at the time.
This is a question for the applicants, right?
Yes.
Okay, so did you hear the question?
Yes, I was just going to say the septic design was totally changed and it was put next to the duplex currently, now.
Okay, so are you saying that the septic design as shown on the plat that was submitted and approved in connection with the original three-lot subdivision, is not where the septic ended up being placed?
The item that was submitted from Andy, I believe, was the one that was incorrect.
I believe at the time.
I'm sorry. What were you saying? Something? Could you repeat what you just said? I'm sorry.
I said the submission, the, I guess the plan, I'm trying to figure out which plan everybody was, I guess, originally speaking about. But the plan submitted from Andy, the original plan, is not what we did, was not correct. Brian Rappanati changed it.
Can I say something? At the time, Andy did, I believe it was a four-bedroom wastewater system. When they bought the property and did a construction registration form, they indicated they would do a six-bedroom building.
That's correct.
And therefore, they had to get a new wastewater permit subsequent to that plat being done. And we had a meeting at that time with the construction registration.
Oh, so let's just make sure that that is vaguely my recollection as well. But what I'm seeing here on the the application form, I'm not sure reflects that last revision. So it says that wastewater permit 1820-1, which was a revision, if I'm, just based on what's here, says it was dated in 2020, but our permit was the following year. So there might be one, we just want to make sure our records are correct. So do you, does anybody happen to, do you know, Faith, you know, what the latest incorrect wastewater permit is?
I have to admit that I did not look that up specifically for this, but in relation to a discussion regarding construction of the new house, I did meet with Tyler, I believe it was in 2023, possibly only 2024, because there was some confusion over the wastewater permits. But he and I went through all of the relevant ones and clarified that the confusion was created by a mistake in the BCR that was submitted then. We went through all of them and confirmed that they were all in place according to.
I remember reading the, right, I remember reading the amended permit for the six bedrooms, but I don't think we have it written here. I will, I would assume that it would be dash two.
There is definitely a dash two.
So, okay, so we just need to update the form probably with the latest permit number and date.
Okay.
I'm just curious whether the revised septic design, if I heard right, was done by Gary Rappanati?
Brian Rappanati.
Yeah, is that on file? Has that been recorded? Is it?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Maybe we should just make a note of that. Yeah, we'll make a note and look it up in, on our own, which we don't normally do, but I think in this case, just to move things along, that's fine. Does anybody have a problem with us looking that up for them? All right, we're going to, we're going to find that information, complete your form for you. I think it was just a harmless mistake.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Could you try again?
Thank you, Siri. I don't need your help right now. Oh, yeah, just for the, just for our attendance, would you, the?
This is for the next meeting.
Oh, it's for our next meeting. Okay. We're still in a hearing. We'll be done shortly. All right, I think we're done when we put her on the table, right? So, interested person, so I'm going to go, I'm going to start with Marie and Bruce.
Yeah, hi, we have a few questions.
These are questions for the applicant or for the commissioner, both?
Well, they're both. I guess the first one would be for the applicant. What drive would be accessed by you for your new residence in the back when you're no longer in the duplex?
Jack Frost Lane, our driveway, the private green sign.
Okay, the one that's used by your business?
Correct, that's all one entity. And Andy and Teresa. Everybody shares that parcel way, basically, because that's how they get to their cabin.
Okay.
Gotcha.
If the new driveway going in is approved, you know, in the original subdivision, I know there were concerns about vegetation border, both for environmental drainage and many aesthetic reasons. Would there be consideration in that insofar as if the drive is put in, the only clearing that would be done is sufficient for the drive in and not beyond?
100%, not touching anything else.
Yes, and still maintain a tree buffer.
It's, the driveway that we want to put in is curved.
Okay.
If I may, Marie, I'm going to ask a clarifying question. When we, Faith and I were onsite, I don't even remember, many moons ago, I believe the discussion was not only would the C. Gordners maintain the buffer, but Tyler indicated to me that he had intentions of improving it, particularly along the part that would no longer be traveled as a drive from the shop to the duplex. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so for the, for purposes of our interested parties, we may actually have an improved vegetative buffer along the part that is not changed.
Yes, and we actually, just to note, we did plant all spruce, spruce blue trees along the highway there. So actually, how it did purchase, I think there was maybe nine or 10 of them. Those are actually planted already. So we've, we actually put in vegetation over there as well.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for Marie and Bruce.
Okay, and then I think the last one that I have, unless my husband has another one, but with you no longer living in the duplex and you're in the back, if you should choose to rent by a BRBO. if you should choose to rent by a BRBO, and I guess this
You don't even have to have that conversation, because we're not, it's literally for our family, that's it.
Okay, because I didn't know whether there would be changes to the wastewater or drinking water systems that have been approved.
All existing stays exactly the same.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all from you folks?
Bruce, you have anything?
I can't think of anything else.
Okay, I think we're good.
All right, thank you. Ms. Bedrow, do you have any questions for the applicant or the commission? Or statements? Christine, are you there?
Yeah, sorry, I had to find the button to turn on my microphone. No, I think Bruce and Marie pretty much had the same questions that I've had. I mean, maybe the only other question is, you know, at any future time, I know they said they weren't gonna subdivide it, but is that anything that may be possible down the road?
I, I want to say no, but I don't know what the future is, you know what I mean? As of right now, those are absolutely not our plans, but I don't want to say yes or no, because I can't really tell the future, basically, so as of right now, no.
No lawyer will say that the clients will reserve their rights to subdivide in the future.
Thank, yes.
Actually, I have a current question, how many, from the original, I think there was gonna be three subdivisions. Somewhere along the line, I think it was changed possibly into two, is that, does that affect future subdivisions and am I correct in that supposition?
I'd like to do a question for the commission, I'm assuming. We, this subdivision was approved in 2021. There are sometimes limits for re-subdivision in like the next following year, it's been several years since then, I don't know if there are any constraints on subdividing further that are, you know, binding and statutory, like I think there's discretionary things, but I don't think there's anything preventing a subdivision.
I think your question was more along the lines of, it was originally four.
Oh, how many was, how many lots are there?
Originally, it was four, could have been five, sorry.
Originally four, and then a lot was changed into three subsequently.
Andy and Teresa did not want to do a major subdivision, so they changed the one.
Correct.
Does that answer the question?
Yeah, I guess it just is of very, of a large interest to us if things are gonna be sliced up smaller and smaller and smaller, that would be of interest to the neighboring properties.
Yes, I totally understand.
I would say in that eventuality, you would be very likely to be interested parties to that proceeding. For what it's worth to you. You would have a say.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask another question, sort of on behalf of the interested parties. Both, all of you, all four of you requested the conditions, or many of them, that we imposed in the original permit. Specifically, the green naturalized buffer along the road and the protections for the stream. I'm assuming, and tell me if I'm wrong, that those are conditions you would still, you would like to see continue and not be done away with or taken away. Is that correct?
Yes, I would much like that to be still intact.
Yeah, I think, I think we expressed that when we were asking about the new cup that was going through. Stand further.
All right.
And that's, and that's yes from us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did I hear anything from Christine on that? I'm sorry, I didn't register.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of in agreement with Bruce and Marie as well, as long as the vegetation stays and we're only cutting a small piece through it and it's a curved driveway, so if we're not gonna be seeing the duplex, we're okay with that.
Yes, Christine, absolutely, that's actually trying, what we were trying to, you know, basically avoid, we want to definitely do the curve, so there is nothing that you can see, we want to be away.
Sewers had those fields, I mean, everybody spent a lot of money trying to keep this area scenic and not get built up. So that's, you know, kind of another concern, because that whole road is kind of a scenic area.
Correct, and that's why we wanted to do our house all the way in the back, so it is hidden away and not, you know, not seen, we want to keep it scenic too, we're on the same exact page.
Okay.
All right, so it sounds to me, and I'm gonna try to wrap this up, we got interesting impressions from the public here, but it sounds like
Just one quick question, one quick question, or one quick statement, and I'm gonna throw it out there. It's really important to consider for the future that our town considers some basic, basic level planning that we'd like to see for the community, we just touched on it right now, about a scenic area that we love and want to continue, there should be some consideration going forward.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds to me, and I'll ask everyone to just scream if it does not sound right, that we all seem, everyone present seems to be in agreement that the driveway would not be opposed, provided the existing conditions on the permit remain in effect. Thumbs up, thumbs up from everybody on the line? All right. Okay. All right, let's move this to any comments from the public here today. None, okay, perfect. Anything else from the commission before we enter deliberation?
No, I withdraw my question based on
I'm sorry, what was that?
I withdraw my comment about moving away with the restrictions because of what they said.
Because they're sort of agreeing on that condition?
Except that, it just means anytime they want to make a change to the border, whatever that change may be, will require another subdivision thing.
Any other access to Route 155 would probably require it, I agree with that.
No, but I'm saying, because the restrictions also include a border at the end of property three, because the gentleman that has, I'm gonna call it the farmland on the other side, didn't want to see a house on that property, so we
Well, I don't want to get into hypotheticals, we don't know what
Let me just finish, the other two restrictions are natural screenings on other parts of the property. So at any time that they want to do anything on the rest of the border of the property, I'm just making a statement, will require a subdivision application.
We're not, we're asking to put in a driveway, not
No, I'm not talking about a driveway, let's say for whatever reason.
But the present application before us concerns an access drive, there's no reason for us to begin a discussion about the other
I'm not, I'm not asking for a discussion, I'm just making a statement. Well, let me make a statement that the people that own the property and their representative are aware that if they were to make any other changes to the border, for whatever reason, it's gonna require another subdivision application to modify the the permit.
I think they're, I'm sure they're aware of the
I mean, it would require amendment, because those conditions exist. We haven't applied to eliminate any conditions, except to the extent that are required to put in a new driveway, we understand that.
I just wanted to state the obvious.
Yeah, I think they're, they all, they all understand. Okay, so
We definitely understand, thank you.
We're trying to, I think we're, I think the applicants agree with me that we're trying to keep this simple. It's already probably gotten far more complicated than they originally wanted. We have obligations for transparency and due process, so here we are. So I'll move that we adjourn and enter deliberative session.
I'll second it.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
No post, okay, great, thank you. Thank you to the applicants, the interested parties, attorneys, and everyone present. The hearing is adjourned. We'll call the meeting to order. Very late start for the regular meeting on Poly Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 21st. First item on the agenda is, do we have any changes to the agenda?
None.
I don't have anything, okay. We have minutes?
Yes, we do, from September?
I prepared minutes for the last meeting.
I prepared with
Everybody.
And I shared them.
She shared them. I just can't remember the date, September?
I'm gonna admit that I missed those in passing. Anybody else look at them? You wrote them?
Yeah, I did a kind of a rough
So you agree? Okay, you saw it? Okay, any changes or additions? I'm gonna abstain, abstain, I didn't read them unfortunately, sorry.
I don't have any changes. What was the date on those? I'll make a motion to accept the September 16th, 2025 minutes. I'll second.
All in favor?
Yep.
Okay, passed. Thank you, Faith and Andy. Faith, you have a report?
I do. BCRs, Marvin Kutch has now put in his BCR for the construction of the house, which was the subject of the flood hazard area permit. And just in relation to a BCR which was received earlier from Chalice Farm, Farnbrook Road, I have confirmed with them that the construction is not in the flood hazard area. I received today
Is this the court? Who's it from?
It's further up Farnbrook Road, but it also has a large swath in the
What's the name you got on it?
Chalice Farm. It's a 60 by 80 foot storage barn.
I thought it was 40 by 60.
Today, I received from Tim Martin, a BCR for the construction of a 28 by 42 milkhouse, milking parlor, and holding area on Route 103 South. I checked and discovered that was again a large swath of that, which is in the river corridor. I called him. Mr. Martin came to the office and I would have to say was rather aggressive in his interaction with me, to such a degree that apart from saying that we didn't have zoning and that he could go ahead no matter what, I was not able to clarify with him exactly what the next steps would be. So I will write to him and confirm that he does need to make a flood hazard area river corridor permit application. If he had allowed a conversation, I could have clarified that he may be exempt because of an agricultural exemption, which is in the bylaw. Or it may possibly be permitted development because it's infill or it's dental stream. However, I can't make any of those judgments without his application, without some sort of cycle. I will also seek clarification on the agricultural exemption issues from Kyle Medash. But I would like to just, I would like it on the record that he was rude and suggested that this was an attempt at zoning, even though I did try and explain to him that it is in fact a law of the town. And he made some
Technically is zoning.
Yeah, but
It's estate zoning, just like Act 250, but it's not town.
But it is a law which the town has adopted.
I'm sorry, who's BCR was this?
Tim Martin, former member of the planning commission and the select board, I understand. So that is most of my report, I did want also
So just the one thing, so it's unclear, you're unclear about where that's, why that stands. He's communicated to you that he's gonna go ahead and do it?
Yes.
Okay, and you're gonna hear back from Kyle?
I, well, I'm gonna do two things, I'm gonna write to Mr. Martin and explain that he does need to make the application and clarify though, that at the end of the day, there may be an exemption, but that determination cannot be
I would say that, yeah, I wouldn't even suggest whether or not, you know, speculate on whether there is an exemption. I think he just needs to be notified in writing, maybe a registered letter, that he does not have the right to just go ahead. Whether he thinks so or not, and he may be, he needs to retain an attorney.
One of his comments was that he would see me in court, so perhaps he's already got that arranged.
That's unlikely.
Well, I mean, just as a point, as I have tried to do, I do try and encourage dialogue when he's in rather than a confrontational approach, but he was immediately
Yeah, that's not terribly surprising. I would like to also say for the record that Faith has done an extremely good job in the past of, in almost, I think every occasion, finding a way through the process for people that hasn't stopped them from getting essentially what they want in the first place. We've had a number of very tricky ones, but Faith has done a great job at that, and I'm sorry that you had to be put in that position. Was there, or were there other people here?
Carol, we'll see.
Okay, well, that's good.
Reality, the state would probably step in if he started anything.
Well, the other reality is that the town permit is actually gonna become irrelevant, I think it's next year.
Yes.
We did that whole thing, we have the town permitting, but the state kind of said, that's a good idea, we're gonna do that for everybody.
Yes, the last point, and I don't know whether it comes here or unfinished business on subdivision, is the status of Bob Garrow's subdivision.
Right.
There were two easements that had to be filed, one of which has been recorded, the fire pond easement. But I think I forwarded its lawyer's response on the access easements, which was, that can only be done once.
Did I send that to everybody? Did you see that?
I did not.
No.
I may have, I may have failed to forward that one, so let's summarize. Two issues, and I think you hadn't gotten to the second, was that, has he, has he filed, recorded his permit yet?
No, not yet.
So two things, he hasn't, he has signed but not recorded the permit.
That's the fire pond?
No.
The permit was the overall permit, I'm sorry.
He has signed our permit and returned that, and not recorded a copy as required. And therefore, we haven't signed the plat. Correct?
Yep.
I have. So he has recorded the fire pond easement?
Yes, he has.
Okay, so he has done that prerequisite to filing the permit. But I guess, I mean, to give, to be very charitable, maybe he hasn't recorded his permit because he's waiting to decide here that whether we're gonna make him file the easement. So the other issue is, we have to decide probably now whether we require filing, recording, the easement to the parcel four, I think we call it.
Yeah, it's parcel four, if it's gonna be outlined.
Before recording the permit. I'm, at this point, my personal opinion is that we can probably show a little bit of flexibility here and ensure that it's done before conveyance, before it's sold, but not necessarily put any more roadblocks ahead of filing, recording the permit. So just to back up, remember
It's spelled out in the permit anyway.
In our permit, yeah, it is in the, it's a condition of the permit, so we have two conditions of the permit, right, that are filing, recording, other conditions of the permit, right, that are filing, recording, other, I'm stuck in, I'm stuck in court mode, recording an easement to the fire pond, which they have now done, and at some point, that we may disagree upon what point that is, recording an easement to the back parcel, whether it's through parcel three or two. I think we left it up. I, I don't know. I'm sort of feeling, I think there may be disagreements between us on this, but I'm, I'm gonna be flexible on this and let it slide for the moment and let, make sure that it's recorded before it's sold, but let's, let's get this thing done. That's my personal opinion. I wanna hear from anybody else.
Technically, you can't sell it, though. It is recorded.
Right, so we have put that condition on it. He will violate the permit if he does. I think that's probably strong enough. We should just get this thing over with. But that's, where are you?
Yep.
Yep? Do you agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. It's spelled out on the permit that he signed and he's gonna record, that he needs to do that.
The restrictions in the permit, that's what he's saying.
So you, you might have a different view?
No, I recall, I looked at, at the time that the question of the fire pond easement came up, I looked at the permit again, and it seemed clear to me that the fire pond easement was something that was required now, but it was not clear to me that the other easement was required at this time. And I, my recollection is, is that that's why we pressed only on the fire pond easement, and they've done that. And as everyone else has said, it's a requirement of the permit. I see no reason why we need to insist on it now.
Okay. We're all in agreement then. Is that answer the question for you? You can get back to the attorney, Mr. Corso's, and let's get the thing, let's make sure that the permit is recorded, and then we can finally make it done with the Carol subdivision. It's only been two years. You're clapping.
Well, I can, I just have...
Oh, we'll take it.
Yeah.
All right.
Nice little celebrations.
Yeah, we have to take our small victories. Was that it?
That was the end of my...
I don't have anything.
I thought it was on the original minutes, but I don't see it now. Is that Sawyer Hill Road on the base of it?
Oh, yes, sorry.
It's got somewhere.
Sawyer Hill Road. So I'm assuming that the construction that you saw was the construction by Wifelman Ranch LLC, mailing address Walnut Jack Frost Lane, for a town highway access, which they are now in the middle of constructing. I did go and have another look at it. The highway access is up the hill.
We're talking about Sawyer Hill Road?
Yeah.
Near the very bottom of it.
That's very small.
They'll make a plot that was sold, I think, by...
So this is the Seaguard?
Yes.
Okay.
I have not received any indication of what future plans they have for construction, but what they're doing is inserting the access, which is approved by the town road swing. And I did discuss within the location of it because of the approximately 50-yard corner part, which is in the flood hazard area. Sorry, I need to color it out.
Looping back like months ago, I can't remember, did we ever figure out what was going on with the road off of 103, the new drive?
Yeah, they put in a new drive.
I think that was something we've been till I come back to.
The, the one opposite the old station.
Down next to Roger Hill Road.
Near Roger Hill Road.
So that apparently was, Vtrans approved that in Montpelier, apparently. The town highway permit is for an access from Roger Hill Road onto the same parcel.
Okay, so it's an access from both 150...
Yeah.
103, yeah. Okay. Okay, but that, we, that's where you want it to be? There's nothing else to do on that?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, I just wanted to remind us, because we, I don't know if we ever addressed it in a meeting.
I think we did.
We discussed the resolution? Okay, fine. That's it. I don't have anything. We've moved on. We've got a lot to cover here, so. Subdivision proposals.
So the first is Wagner.
This is Nunava.
Yes, Hastings Lane.
Hastings Lane, okay. Ms. Golden, are you representing that?
Yes, and Johnny is on. He's the owner of the lot.
Okay.
Hello, ma'am.
Oh, you're on. Okay, good. Hi, how are you?
Okay, I need to mention that I've got the correct, because we had two versions.
I can see.
They were in the last meeting, signed out, and I sent them back.
Well, we want to make sure the subdivision is approved on.
Okay, so what are, where are we on this right now?
The application from my perspective is complete.
Okay.
So we are at the sketch plan review.
So this is a sketch plan review. Okay. So can you just give us a thumbnail of what we're doing here? This is a, we have a one parcel being divided into two.
John?
Yeah.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this, because I know many members of the Wagner family and their...
Okay, fair enough. And when we move on to the next, you can, yeah, okay. Can I give you a real quick kind of snapshot?
Yeah. So it's, it's an existing parcel at the end of Hastings Lane, along, next to Lake Nunava, and Johnny and his sister are just subdividing the land in a way we found as even as possible, so that they can each have a slice of the land with lakefront access. There's no proposed work, no proposed buildings. The existing wastewater system and the existing wells will be used. We've already got this subdivision approved through the state wastewater and water supply division. So we're now at the town to get the minor subdivision permitted.
Okay, so I just will point out right from the start that we're gonna have to include Plymouth in this.
Yeah, so there's no, the portion that's in Plymouth is in altering the line that's in Plymouth. So we were getting it approved through Mount Holly and then filing with Plymouth. If that...
Yeah, okay. That would have, I mean, I would suggest that you confirm that with Plymouth Planning Commission. I don't, I don't, I'm not at all familiar with the regulations on whether they would view this as requiring their approval or not, so I won't say anything about that. But we will have to include them in a notice. This is certainly within 500 feet of the town line.
Oh, yeah.
On the town line, so.
Probably on the town line. Okay, where is the existing wastewater system?
Well, that's what I'm gonna ask. I think it's Lot 3A, which doesn't show on this map.
You'll need our engineer plan for that. So there was a, so we submitted our engineer plan that was approved through the, or through the state. What you're looking at is the boundary survey, which is not the same as the, it won't show the same items as our engineer plan. So our engineer plan shows the wastewater system, sewer lines, septic tanks, wells, water lines.
Well, your attorney's letter, in the forefront, if you will, N3A, V and C, the drawing here only shows V and C. I remember an earlier drawing showing in Plymouth another piece of property, which I'm assuming is A, and we were told at the time that's where your mound system was, and I don't know if that's...
So are you looking at the plan that's, that has the title block Edmund Kesselring on it, or the one that's the boundary survey?
Uh, this is a boundary survey.
Because you'll need, you'll need, you'll need the Edmund Kesselring plan to see the lot that the wastewater system is on. It's labeled existing lot 3A.
Oh, this is the wastewater.
Yeah.
The boundary survey, there's a shaded area, which I believe, well, tell me what the shaded area means. That's...
On which plan?
Is that, is that supposed to be the paved surface? The dark gray solid area?
Off left of the property. Looks like driveway or road.
There's an indication somewhere here.
Yeah, it's not really, yeah, it's not the same.
Same.
So the shading is for, it's depicting some of the easements that are needed?
Oh, that's just a shared access easement.
Yeah, so I, I think just to clarify, the boundary survey is for plat and parcel only and easements. If you're looking for details of like pavement and where the road is and the existing utilities, that's on our engineer drawing.
Right.
The one with the Edmund Kesselring.
My question is related to that, in that it appears that at least a proposed drive will go through the town line, a stone wall that defines the town line.
No, so that's the easement. There's no proposed drive.
That's already there. Oh, it's, it's, there's no proposed drive on the...
There's, yeah, there's no proposed drive, there's no proposed house. That is a proposed easement, because that's shared infrastructure. So we need to get easements for the shared infrastructure between the two existing houses, that share a force main that go up to the mound. So if you look up, like right off of the left of where you think that's a driveway, that's the mound system.
Yeah, what does FM stand for?
Force main.
Okay, all right. So you're gonna be, okay, so is that wastewater system in place?
Yeah, yep. It's a previously permitted, previously certified by, I think it was David Hindinger who certified it, but there's no change to that. There's no increase in flow. It's, it's remaining as it is today.
Well, I guess they probably took the wall out there. That was, it might seem like a very small detail, but the stone wall that defined the town line must have been moved then.
So if it's on that survey, it's still there.
Okay, all right, neat.
Oh, that's somebody else's stuff?
Yeah. That was as of...
That's Lot 3A.
I'm just trying to find when he did the survey. I think it was a year ago, maybe?
Yeah. Is this parcel in the, correct me if I'm using the wrong terminology, in the wilderness community?
I think that's the parcel next to it, the Nunava Foundation.
This is not subject to wilderness community restrictions?
No.
That you're aware of? Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. I think that's the parcel to the...
Well, there's a whole lot, I guess a lot of them, but...
There are two adjoining...
I don't mean Nunava Foundation. I mean the wilderness community or, there's a, I can't ask you.
Listen, Johnny, my understanding, this is not part of the wilderness community from the original purchase in 19, I think it was 1989.
Are there no covenants that are restricting this, these deeds?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
We do own a piece of property that is, is in the wilderness community. It's just not this piece. It's on the damn road, a small empty lot.
All right, well, that probably makes things easier for our purposes anyway. Okay. Do we have anything we want to look at before we schedule a hearing?
I'm doing, I'll tell them, I'll tell them everything.
It might be easier to record too. We've done that before.
Yeah, I was just making sure we had everything.
We have to make sure that everything on one satisfies our checklist.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
So can I just jump in? Our, our Edmund Kesselring plan will satisfy the checklist. The, the boundary survey, though, is what we would want recorded as the official boundary survey, but we're happy to record our map alongside that, since you have additional things on the checklist that the boundary surveyor wouldn't normally include on his, if that makes sense.
When you say the checklist includes things that wouldn't normally be included, you mean the, the questions related to septic and water?
Yeah. Even topo, I think that was something that we recently corresponded on Faith. You had asked the boundary surveyor to add that. It just, I, I'm not a boundary surveyor, so I'm, I don't know what it is that the line is, but it takes a boundary plat sort of out of the survey realm and puts it into like an engineer realm. So we're happy to file both with the town and, and not have the boundary surveyor put things on their map that they're not comfortable, you know, putting down to call a plat.
So, so for example, what would that be? Sorry.
The topo, the topo wouldn't normally be included on the survey.
Well, there's, there are contour lines on both.
Yeah, at the request of the town. We did not originally submit it with topo on the survey.
Right, but what I'm hearing you say, tell me if I'm wrong, is that there are other details your surveyor is not comfortable adding?
Well, I mean, it's not that he's not comfortable adding. It just takes it out of a boundary survey plat, like serving the purpose in the survey world as a survey, and puts it into like an engineer world. So we want to submit both of our plans together.
I guess I submit both of them. We just gotta make sure everything's not between the two, right?
So I don't agree with your characterization, but, so you're saying that as, as, from the point of view as applicants, or that's a position your surveyor or attorney has taken?
The surveyor. He just doesn't want to add all of the detail we have on our plan to his plan. His survey represents, you know, what he feels is enough for a boundary plat. Didn't have the, the topo on, so he just wanted, you know, he provided me with a comment that just said, "I don't want this to turn into an engineer drawing." He wants it to stand as the parcel plat, and then our drawing can be with that, you know, depicting the roadway and the names and the driveway and the utilities, and then the notes about like the size of the pump station, the size of the water line, the size of the force main, details like that. He won't want to keep...
So we have a slightly different view. There are things that probably do not need to be on the plat. Our, our boundary survey, our official record of the proceeding, but roads and access drives do need to be on there.
Right, so he has the driveway on there?
I think that, you know, mounds or what have you, custom, you customarily are on a separate plat and site plan. But we do have a number of things that we require beyond the plat. Roads are one of them.
So the driveway is on there, but I'm saying like the details of the septic, the size of the lines, even the contours. So the dotted, their dash line that you see within the gray easement area that enters the, near the 29.33 on the west side of the property line, that's the driveway, the dash line there.
Okay, we're just gonna speed this along here. So we're gonna go through our checklist so that we don't have a situation where we ask you for something later, because that's annoying for everybody. So we're gonna try to get our hearing scheduled today, assuming that would be your preference. So let's just go through it, and we'll have to skip in... So let's just go through it and we'll have to skip a number of things on the checklist because they don't apply to most applications anymore. We don't require test pits, for example. Title block. Date, scale, north. We have a north? Yeah, we do. Scale. Yep. Yep, that too. Date. That date reflects the revision. This has only been run revision so far. This is revision A, the first revision. Is that correct?
Are you, you're looking at the survey?
The boundary survey?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
And the revision was just to add in the topo lines. You might have the original one that was submitted. Somewhere.
We do have contour lines on this one, so.
Yeah, because I asked for them to be added because they're on the checklist.
Yeah.
But there was an earlier version which didn't have them.
Okay, and that does not have a revision letter? And just check the date if you can. Total acreage per lot. One point eight six, one point three four. And we have the total acreage of the both properties here somewhere probable. Here's the revision. We have a revision date of ten.
Yeah.
Three, twenty-six, twenty-six. That's cool.
I might be mistaken.
So we might need to change that. Just make a note.
I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
The revision date looks to be referencing next year.
I didn't notice that.
That's why we check things over. Surveyor's name, address. I don't have his address, but do we normally have it? Yeah, we do. Well, no, wait a minute.
It's on the title block, seven, three, four, US Route four, unit one.
Yeah, okay, there we go. That's just the stamp, okay. How are we titling these lots, Jim? Where is it?
Three B.
Is the, is the name three B and C? Is, is there a reason for that? These were part of a previous subdivision that? Why, why three?
So they were originally lot three A. Or lot three, I'm sorry. And then three A is the mound system lot.
Okay, we have reference to that subdivision. The original subdivision was, was what?
Was three.
I mean, do you have a?
Existing lot three is what the entire parcel is today.
Right, do we, do we have before us the information about when that was previously subdivided?
Um, let me see if I can find that.
Is there any other reference here?
I don't see a reference to it.
Book ninety-one, page six seventy-eight, dated November twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen.
Right here.
There's a different, like in a different spot.
Yeah, so normally what we expect to see on here is a reference to any other surveys that were consulted or relied upon. Especially when it's sort of implicitly referring to them by saying like lot three. Are we expecting to be a two and a one?
So two. Yeah, this, so lot two is the property that's to the west. So I guess I'll, I'll, I'll back up and say with this, do you want, I, I mean, all of these other subdivisions should be on record with the town. So are we expected to re, to submit all of them with this?
Right, we need to look and see whether there was conditions placed on it, approval, et cetera, so. We'll need to identify when it was, if, if nothing else. Okay, so that's, they're, they're numbered. B and C. So let's move on.
And not to add confusion, but if you look at the Edmund Kesselring plan, that is where you'll find lot two, lot three A, lot three.
They do see two, yeah.
Which is not.
Part of it.
Part of the property.
Well, but it was, I'm assuming part of a previous subdivision and there's, there's a lot one somewhere.
Lot one is at the beginning of the road, I think.
Okay.
That road's the access road.
Mm-hmm, okay.
To the public access beach.
And all existing and proposed buildings are indicated on the boundary survey?
Yeah, there are no proposed buildings and the existing should be all on there.
And there's no proposed changes to the access drives either. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And no, no other development of any kind that would require a shoreline permit or a other state water or wetland permit?
Nope.
Okay, good.
We did submit the permit navigator. That's one of your requirements now, so you can see.
So you have that?
It should be with the package that we submitted. I will, I will say, I don't know how familiar you guys are with the permit navigator. It dings wetland and shore land anyway, just because of where it is.
Right, that's.
But we, we did get the state wastewater permit. And when you submit the state wastewater permit, if permit navigator has dinged any other permits, they automatically send your application to those departments to say, hey, this permit navigator result is being submitted for wastewater water supply. And then they get a chance to look at it and we didn't. We weren't contacted for anything by wetlands or shore land, just because of the nature of the project anyway, not requiring one.
Right, makes sense. And your wastewater permit was amended for, to permit the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, and we have that, Faith, right?
Did you include that in the package?
I believe so. I can send it, I can send it again if I need to. And I believe it's reported at the town.
No, it's okay.
What was the recording date? I think we're all set, right?
I don't.
I just have one more question. They referenced three A.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Let's just, we're just trying to get through the checklist to see if they need to add anything.
Just, just to clarify, was the wastewater permit recorded? What I'm seeing here is just the documents for recording. Uh, dated April the thirtieth.
Um, I believe they were. Johnny, I don't know if you can speak to that.
Do you mean the original wastewater from thirty years ago?
No, the one that we would have had to do like to permit this subdivision.
The one that was issued in April this year.
It's definitely not something I would have recorded. So yeah, Kate, if your office didn't do it, then I. You know, Ralph Michael was the one who was originally working on this years ago, four years ago, five years ago. He may have recorded it.
Um, we would have needed to record the most recent one.
And that has not happened for me.
So we, so between, so a permit was issued by the state in April of twenty twenty-five, correct?
Yes.
So the, a per, a condition of the permit is to have it recorded.
Yeah, we can, we'll record that. I'm just trying to find in my emails.
Okay, you might want to check and see whether I don't know, there's a time constraint on that or not, but anyway, we'll need that recorded before we have a hearing.
So. Do we want them to hide any wetland slash forest stuff to this one? This sounds like this is one they can add on to.
Uh, I did check and.
I haven't been out there. Is there anything or no? Okay.
The, the lake is, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we have the real constraints. Do we have anything we need to add to this? I don't think we do. We have the road.
I think.
And we have all the buildings and everything, so.
I think they have.
My concern is that everything is shipshape with the wastewater permit. We haven't really gotten that nailed down. I'm, okay, do we, do you think we need anything else for the plat?
Just the wastewater permit being recorded?
Yeah, normally, normally the plats reference surveys.
Previous.
We're gonna probably want the date corrected, but it's minor. So we have three things maybe we're looking for. Fix the date. Clarify.
Reference old subdivision?
Sorry?
Did you say reference old subdivision?
Reference the, on the boundary survey, what plats have been used or relied upon. And I'm assuming there's one that is a subdivision plat as well. And let us know, not necessarily put it on this plat, but it would be helpful if it were when this lot was created in the first place through subdivision. And lastly, clarify whether we have the most recent wastewater permit and whether it's recorded. Is there anything else?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Uh, lot three A. What about, that's where the mound system is for the. Does that have to be on the plat? The, and I'm not talking about the, let's see. Who did this one? Edmonds. I'm not looking at Edmonds. I'm looking at what I think is the plat.
It is.
Vermont survey.
It is on here.
Yeah. And I, from my understanding, they're going to report both. Because what the information is on this one and how it's on that.
I want to make sure that we have one that satisfies it, but I think we'd probably ask for both, yeah.
Uh, but just to clarify, on the boundary survey, the subdivision checklist does ask for contours. So if your surveyor is revising, presumably they shouldn't remove the contours.
Should what?
They should not remove.
Right, we need the contours to remain, yeah, so. Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so can, do you think, do you all think that we have enough confidence we're gonna get all of this resolved in a month and we can go ahead and schedule a hearing or should we wait to see? What do you want to do?
Let's go for it.
Let's go for it, what do you think?
I'd say we could schedule it. And if they don't have it, then we'll cancel the hearing if they haven't recorded that stuff.
Well, I need to check it twice.
Oh, I guess that's your question was that.
Do you, do you, do you both think, the applicants think you should go ahead and schedule a hearing? Or do you want to try to get these things? Take your time and get this all straightened out, shipshape first?
I think we can schedule a hearing.
Okay.
I think that's.
And if we, just so you're aware, we have, we incur costs scheduling, noticing those hearings. If we have to cancel it, we'll have to ask for more money to notice a new year. If you're comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with it.
What's the date of the next hearing?
Well, that's what we have to decide. It's a month at minimum.
One clarification, which probably doesn't factor in, I will be out of the country from the sixth, sixteenth of November. Which, which is.
Well, then where are we gonna have our hearing? Where are we going?
And we're going with you?
Somewhere in the UK.
That'll work.
That would not clash with the regularly scheduled meeting time, but it would just mean that before that, we'd have to get everything in line to get the announcements out, all the neighboring properties and so on. Oh, and actually, the other, the other issue is if Plymouth has to be involved.
Oh, that's, we do have to clarify that.
What do we want then? How do we want that to be resolved before we had to schedule a hearing?
It, it, I don't think it'll stop our hearing. They just would have to deal with Plymouth on their own, but we need to notify Plymouth.
Yeah, they would be notified.
I don't think there's anything in our, our regulations that would make our result like depend on Plymouth's decision. I don't think, I think they're independent. You guys all agree with that?
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
Okay, I think that, we just, we're letting you know, we're gonna know, we have to notify Plymouth as part of our requirements, but I would advise you to get an actual statement from their planning commission or select board or both saying that you do not need to go through their subdivision process because if this, I would say, if this came to us and we were on the other side, we would probably want to look at it. So. What's the date of it? Is it the eleventh?
No.
No, it would be the nineteenth.
Oh, eighteen, and that works for you?
Eighteenth.
Yeah, sorry, I'm still thinking.
And that works for you, Faith?
Yes.
Do we need a thirty day week?
Yeah, we do, really.
So that's not thirty days?
Oh, I mean.
I think it's just thirty, isn't it?
It takes a week to get it into the paper and then we need two weeks from there. It's like basically what it is.
If I get it to them by this Friday, it will be in next Wednesday.
That's plenty of time. That's three weeks ahead.
It's, I think fifteen days is the.
Yeah.
Eighteenth works.
I'm okay with it. Let's do it. It's, what did we say?
Four thirty?
The regular meeting starting at six thirty and five thirty?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm on the side of the clock.
John, I'm not available then, but I'm recusing myself for this anyway.
Okay. Five thirty? Is five thirty on the eighteenth of November okay for you all?
That works for me.
That's a.
Works for me.
Oh, okay. All right, well, let's pencil it in and you can work with Faith in the next week to try to get those other things figured out and then we're all set. All right, anything else on this? I don't think so. All right, thank you all.
Can I, can I, can I just confirm what I'm doing?
Yeah, sure.
You, you want the revised date on the survey?
Yep.
Reference old subdivision or you want the date of when it was originally subdivided?
Yep, and a plat, if there's a plat that, that it created these lots, for example, that's nice to reference there.
Okay.
By guess, this is probably a fairly old subdivision, so you're probably not gonna have an actual permit or decision. You may be lucky if you even have a reference to like the, to date. But you will certainly have a plat that created the lot.
Yeah, we, we definitely have wastewater permits going back and tracking the full subdivision. So I just don't know if a plat would have been.
And I don't know if you guys are able to come in, but there, you know, it's pretty easy to search for that in the town office and maybe Faith can help you out with that too, so.
Well, she's on vacation.
Right.
Works for us.
All right. And you're, you're okay with the rest of the to-do list there? You got it?
Yeah, I'm good. I just wanted to make sure I'm relaying the correct information to the surveyor and not getting confused on anything.
Yeah, whatever the proper revision date is. I'm just saying, it looks like it's saying twenty twenty-six to me, but.
Yeah, I think it was probably ten, three, twenty twenty-five. That seems about the date Faith probably emailed us.
All right, thank you. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Finally, finally.
Time to wake up.
You're very patient. Thank you. It's, it's a lot.
Now, this is educational.
She's having too much.
You're like, oh, God, what have I gotten into?
I, I don't think that. I, I, I'll say something though for the record before we start. Um, I'm new to the process and Faith has been amazing. She emails promptly and tries to point you in the right direction and this is a very thankless job that you're all doing, so, um, from somebody who's a observer, um, thank you all.
Well, thanks for saying that. Did you hear at the beginning that, of her report, that she had bad interactions?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for, for adding some contrast.
Yeah, I, that's why I wanted to put it on the record.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Because it's, um, like I said, she's been amazing and I don't know, I don't really know what the process, I think we sort of maybe did some things backwards, but anyway, this is my brother-in-law's parcel up on Bollesville Road. Um, there've been a few surveys, but we redid the survey. That's the parcel entirety and the, and the intent is to split the parcel equally. Each side's getting well, because it's recorded and you guys wanted these stupid copies and you can't, she couldn't take it out of the book, so anyway.
White it out.
Um, this is recorded here in Mount Holly, but this is for your meeting, so.
So this, okay, that, let's just pause briefly on that. So this is recorded, but it does, it depicts, this is, I think, the question we had in our meeting and we wanted to ask you about.
Right.
It depicts a subdivision boundary that hasn't been approved.
Correct.
But we all, you acknowledge that, okay?
Right, and that's why I said we might have done things a little. My brother-in-law lives in California and his intent is to divide this parcel equally between his two brothers. So Chris and I would get one parcel and Larry and Sandy would get the other parcel. And so this is the access coming up. Sorry. Bollesville Road, yeah, so there's a bar way down here. We would be getting the front.
So we're on north Bollesville?
Yes, off of one oh three over the Redding Bridge, yeah.
Okay. So the discontinued part is, is somewhere?
Uh, what's a discontinued? This is all class four. All of this is class.
Well, all of that is the.
And it's all class four, okay. That's the real rough part, okay.
Yeah. And there's actually a tree down here so you can.
The travel part is down here?
Yeah, we're, we're right over there. So when.
So can I ask you about that real quick? So do you have plans to improve the road or?
No.
Okay.
We have zero plans to improve the road. There's a bunch of yahoos that go through there already. We're not happy with it.
He knows.
I'm sorry.
I happen to be one of them.
Colorful local folk. Our intent is to come off the town road to the bottom of the class four road here and access and put in a shared driveway which would run on the inside edge. Yet to be determined exactly where it's gonna be because there's a hump here and we've had Steve Flanders come out. We might have to serpentine just for the grade, so we don't end up with a driveway like this. Uh, but it'll come along this side.
Tunnel, nice tunnel?
No, no, um, but it would access both properties and my brother-in-law's intent is when we actually formalize this, there'll be some things he wants to add, language, like if.
Easements.
Easement, yeah, so power would come in underground, cost would be shared between both parcels. Shared access on the inside, shared maintenance. If we had to drill a well that's shared, um, we have to give each other, like, we're not allowed, like, we couldn't withhold that from Larry and Sandy.
You're gonna be on this side?
Yeah, we're gonna be on this side. And then they'll be on the back, um, and I don't know that they're gonna build, but my brother-in-law just said.
But you are?
That's our intent.
Yeah, okay.
Providing, I see how this all goes.
You're not gonna move into the cabin?
No, the cabin's pretty raccoon infested, so, um, there's some dry rot, no.
It's already rented out.
It's rented out, yeah.
They're not paying enough.
The local yahoo's like sitting up there and drinking their beer though. Um, would go up there and pick up the cans and stuff. Uh, my brother-in-law would love us to salvage the cabin. I, I don't know that it's salvageable. Um, and it's not depicted on here, uh, which I guess I could talk to Ethan about putting it on, but it's not our intent that it's gonna stay. So that was my other thing is when I'm going through the list, there was like, you know, identify where wetlands are. There's no wetlands, so I, when I sent Faith a thing, I printed out stuff from A and R and I printed out topography. There's no culverts, there's no town roads, there's no wetlands, there's. This is a, yeah, but this is, there's no culverts in this road.
No, there's a lot of things ain't in that road.
Yeah, so.
Except rocks.
Rocks.
Rocks, rocks and downed trees, so.
I'm surprised they ain't been cut out.
And so you, just out of curiosity, it, in your opinion, it was cheaper or more cost-effective to put in a new road, private road, than to travel?
It's absolutely not cheaper. We have zero interest in making it easier for anybody to be driving up and down by our, ourselves. We, there's some history with, we, we wanna be private, we don't want people bothering us, and if you make it easy for them, then they'll.
Bother you.
They'll bother you. If we have our own private area and it's rough, then less likely to have trucks and things going up and down there. If the town wants to improve it, that's on them. I mean, that's fine.
Similar to overrun, so.
Hey, I guess the next question is, the boundary line's gonna be here and then come across like this. It's not like jetting out or.
Yeah, well, we just, thank you for reminding us. I'm not sure what it was supposed to do.
Yeah, it is here because originally, when we were talking about doing this, we were gonna, Greg was gonna keep this and this was ours. And the cabin is sort of in this spot and he was thinking about this jut out as a perfectly flat little piece. He was thinking he'd like to put a garage or something there, but that's not happening, but that's why it's there. There's a little bar way here, but this is the line. And I think it divides it up so that it is equal, the way that, um, Ethan did it.
So, so the subdivision line jogs to the left there and then?
Goes back and then it follows.
Is that a stone wall?
Stone wall and then there's another one here, but there's another stone wall here and then there's, it's pretty, if you've been out there, uh, there's kind of like a path already. You kind of drive up, there's a path and it goes out to the cabin. And this is pretty steep on this side, like this is going down to, um, Chris's and, um, Glenys's property, Bobo. It's pretty steep on that side.
So is the subdivision line here or here?
Don't stub your toe.
No, sorry?
Is this the subdivision line here?
Right here, like.
Or is?
No, it's this here. It comes in off of here. And this is, there's another bar way here that comes down.
Defined by stone or old wire or what?
It's an opening and it's flat and then you can come through the stone wall to come down into this lower parcel and this is pretty well.
I mean, is there, is there anything defining that right now? The, the boundary line?
The boundary line, no, we're sort of.
They're like pins or?
He has, he has some flagging out there, but, um, I don't know if these are actually.
Just why does it, or just simplicity, why didn't it just follow the stone wall?
I don't know.
Okay. It just seems like an interesting choice that, cause.
Yeah, I don't know. I think he was trying to make sure it was equal and, and that might have been.
If you're family and you never fight, and not all families are like that, trust us, we've been dealing with one for two years, that does fight. Um, having a boundary where it's not.
I, yeah, and that's certainly something I can ask.
Obvious on the ground.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we are, we're sort of recognizing that the stone wall's the boundary. Like, you know, and this is gonna be some sort of, you know, like, area here, but, like, he's not doing anything here and neither are we, cause the stone wall's here, like, we're gonna be over here and I don't know what he's gonna do.
That's approximately where you'll be building over here?
Probably, well, about where the cab, like, the cabins here, we're probably gonna cabin a little bit. We have view this way and that. I mean, it's quite pretty.
Yeah.
We have a lot of nice pictures.
It is a nice spot.
It's a nice spot, yeah.
I've been there many times.
They've been up there drinking.
Yeah.
No, actually, I hope they're putting up posters.
No, she's pitching her tent there.
We've camped out. I mean, it's, it's a nice spot and it's Greg's, he's not well, so, um, it's his desire that it stays in the family, so.
How far was it from your old house on Bollesville?
Uh, we're all the way at the other end. That, the class four section's, it's about a mile.
So you're almost down by, um, um.
David's house.
Bollesville, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, David's place is down here.
So wastewater permits?
We don't have any at this time. I don't think Larry's planning on doing that. We did have Brian Rapinotti out just to sort of give us an idea and there's all all sorts of availability of septic in this middle area.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
In-ground? Good for you.
Uh, I didn't say in-ground. There's availability, but he said there would be no issue with us getting a five-agerment permit, which is way more than what we need anyway. We're downsizing, so.
Can you read any kids?
Famous last words?
Yeah, well, we did want to downsize. We sold our Victorian. We're gonna do another one, so.
And the plans to develop this are?
I don't know what Larry and Sandy are gonna do. I think at the, I think they're gonna hold on to it for a while. If I was a betting person, I think it'll end up being my nieces will share that parcel and one of them would maybe build, the other one, maybe not. They have, Larry and Sandy have a lake house and a house in Florida. I don't see this being something that they're gonna.
Yeah, so the reason I ask is we have, you know, decision to make on whether we do a deferral permit with the state.
Okay.
With wastewater. Or are we just to ask you to go ahead and get one? Um, it sounds like you plan to develop.
Yeah, we've already talked and I probably.
You will need a wastewater permit and it probably makes sense to have it before.
Yeah, I mean, we, our preference would be to sort of get this done, cause we don't wanna spend money if like, we can't get the, like, a subdivision done and get this property, like, my brother-in-law keeps saying, when are you gonna put in the driveway? What are you, I said, I'm not spending a nickel until it's ours. But I can talk to Kevin and work on getting something for at least our piece, if that's what.
Right, yeah, cause you're, it's not yours yet, right?
Right, it's not mine. And we had preliminary work done and Brian was great, but I would probably use Kevin, cause he's local. And have him come out. So on the other piece, we did, we had Kevin go out. We actually have septic done on our other piece that we're intending to sell eventually, but we're tabling that until we get through this piece.
So what other plats do we have, or is just copies of this one again?
This is on file and I have two copies that you can take. I mean, I printed out.
Oh, it's just the same one? Okay.
Yeah, the same one.
Yeah, well, I have two, so I have my other parcel that we're not doing, so we can put two for that.
So contours, what are your attention?
Which most surveys, most surveys don't have contours, so can I ask why?
It's in the subdivision regulations forum and most of the ones we've done recently have all. They just export them from a, yeah, we just add them and I don't understand what the.
I mean, it is helpful to have, like, when we were talking, you know, you're describing, you know, this is very steep, you know.
Yeah, it is steep. I mean, and I get.
Especially from looking at how to design like access especially and stuff.
Right, what I'm saying is we're gonna have one common access off an existing class four road. Up here, we'll put this in. We're, and we're gonna, you know, build one home on this. You know, you know, like, we're not, we're not doing a ten plot subdivision. We're, it's pretty minimally.
I'm sorry, this has probably been covered before, but I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on something. Who is the current owner of?
My brother-in-law.
Your brother-in-law. And after the subdivision, uh, which piece, is it the bottom piece that's going to be conveyed to?
Parcel.
Parcel one would be conveyed to Chris and I.
Okay.
And parcel two would be conveyed to my brother and sister-in-law live in Ludmo.
And will those conveyances be a gift or will there be a financial?
No, they'll be a gift, cause he's got it from his mom and Cindy's listed on this, but she's already quit, claimed her interest out, so my brother-in-law owns.
That's what I'm thinking about. Maybe, I mean, I don't.
What is it? What are you, I'm sorry?
There are provisions in the subdivision regulations relating to subdivisions for purposes of a gift. And I don't know if they necessarily apply here or whether they make a difference, but that's why. I mean, that's, I think what they were originally for is this inheritance kind of situation.
Or donation.
Cause we're just looking for, normally you, we need a lot of other stuff.
Right.
And what I'm hearing is that you don't have that yet, cause it's not yours.
Right.
And you don't really wanna expend any money until it is totally understandable. I wouldn't want to either.
Contrary to popular belief, I'm not made of money.
You're not, you're not.
I do well, but I, I'm not spending money I don't need to spend, so.
It's because you're not gonna get any commissions off a gift.
No, no, not getting a commission off a gift. But I look at this, it's like, sold them their property, sold John his property, yeah, I've sold them property, yeah, so.
And my grandmother rolled over in her grave.
I'm sure she.
Is this hers?
Yeah.
The, for, oh, from Helen? Your grandmother sold to Helen? This parcel?
No.
Oh. Helen was my brother and sister-in-law's mom that was my husband's dad's first wife.
Sounds, it sounds good.
What's the story with that brook?
I believe that's what that is, yeah.
Yeah, there's a small stream.
There's a little stream there.
It does not run year-round.
It's not perennial.
At all.
But it was good enough that they used that for the boundary line.
No, well, the boundary is actually here.
Actually.
No, it is. That's not the boundary line.
Oh, it's here, okay.
It's the center line of the brook.
The center line of the brook, yeah.
Which is usually a bad idea.
Because this land and that land were all one parcel at one time.
Yeah, cause I think that this was sold, yeah.
Elijah's camp. But this is essentially an original boundary.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just, I did look, I do believe there's a very tiny sliver of wetland, which I presume is around that brook.
Down in here?
Yeah.
I went onto the A and R site and I didn't see any of the lot affected by wetlands.
It's just a tiny little section.
If it is, it's, like you said, it is tiny.
Contours.
Cause I know where that brook was gonna go.
Yeah.
They're exactly the same acreage? Wow. That's, that's how brothers would wanna do it, I guess, huh?
He's an engineer, my brother-in-law. He is, um, was a engineer for the city of Long Beach in California for over twenty years, retired. And his wife's an engineer, so they're pretty.
Pretty savvy.
Pretty eye-doting, T-crossing type of people.
Still, look at that, look at that one there. That ain't acreage.
Let's just go through it.
John, you're right, the stone wall would be a lot nicer.
I don't know, I don't know why they.
Dates.
Here, there.
I, I would check on that.
The boundary being the stone wall? Okay.
Makes everybody's life simpler.
Ethan, it's extremely easy to get ahold of, so I will make it my priority.
All you have to do is say you'll take a fractional list.
If you can just decide, you could decide and tell the surveyor, but I don't know who you have to talk to, what brother you have to talk to, but to me, that's just nuts, like, to have a line that just goes, and you have a perfectly good wall.
No, I'm saying to alter the survey though, to actually make that correction.
Well, we're gonna need a new one.
Oh, okay.
Because we're gonna have to prove it and we have to sign a new survey.
Okay, cause there is the copy of the survey here.
We're gonna void that.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I checked, you can't void it, but it will be superseded.
Well, we'll write on that void like that we've often done, but it will not be, um.
The one to go by.
Survey of record for this parcel. We're gonna have a new one that.
So this is recorded like this?
Yeah.
They presented.
So I looked at it today and, and they're really, and I think this is what probably Carol told Faith. It doesn't look like there's any statute that says you can't put in a proposed, you can't record a proposed subdivision. Which is very odd, but I couldn't find anything that said you can't do it, so that's why Carol let you do it. But it doesn't say this is official.
Well, that's why.
And this isn't a sub, it's, well, it is, well, there, there's a line.
It's super confusing. It's super confusing if you don't know any better because it's not real. Like, there's, there aren't two lots.
Right.
There's only one. So, but there's, as far as I can tell, there's no law that says you can't record it, I guess.
So you, we would need a new one anyway.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So I have to get ahold of Ethan.
We're going to have to have a block on, actually, did we, oh my gosh, I just realized, did we tell them that we need a block that says, the last, we had to tell them that we need a block that says.
Signature block. The planning commissioner's approval.
Yeah, 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 I just thought of that because that wasn't on there, was it?
No.
You've got to get this subdivision regulation updated so we can have a real checklist. But we're going to have to have a block on here that says approved by planning commissioners. And we're going to need the contour lines, which is very easy. Ethan knows how to do it. He's done it for us many times in the last few years. They just import the contours, it should be very straightforward. And he'll indicate that this is revision and a new date on there. Normally we require the access to be defined, so you're going to need to take your best guess on how you get into these things and get Bovee to give you a permit.
Okay, because there, there is already an opening that gives you access.
That needs to be shown.
Okay.
And you need to get a town access permit, which is mostly.
It's just Bovee's science paper.
Yeah, it's like a building permit.
I don't think they own that.
So that might need to be updated?
Yeah, because see, their name is down here.
Oh, it could be air, huh?
Okay.
It's got the same parcel ID too. So one of them is just a copy and paste maybe?
Okay.
Okay, so I have. Natural water force.
Good, there you go. I'll make this real concrete.
That might be it.
Okay, we're ready to file this, baby.
Yes.
Yes, but it's not hot because it's actually Volvo, it's the whole thing.
So norm, we require knowing how to get to this. If you definitely know you do not want to access it from the road.
It's definitely going to be off of that common access.
Just show.
Yep.
Okay.
Just show the access.
But I don't want to put something in there that might not be exactly how it's going to look.
How, I mean.
We can put something in, but I don't want to come back and be fighting over vegetation or whatever you guys want to argue about, but I don't want to put an access here if it ends up coming out.
So let me, let me just start another way. So when and if you build, we're probably going to need to be amended. So we're, we're, we're going to do this in a way we, I think, we can use an exception to doing all of this ahead of time with the gift. I think we could probably do this through a gift, gift exception and not require a whole bunch of stuff.
Does it still require a hearing and all that stuff?
Yeah, of course, yeah. Your neighbors get a fair chance to say what they want to say and.
And interesting that, that people that don't actually abut the property can have a say?
Well, there's different ways, there's different kinds of having a say. Interested parties have statutory standing to, to like appeal, but the public can say whatever they want. We just don't have to, I mean, it doesn't buy any effect.
Interested parties are land, like a budding land.
There, there's the whole, there's a statute that defines.
People that are making comments that have a whole state highway separating their properties, I would say.
They're still abutting.
Even if it's a cross highway, they're still abutting.
Still abutting, interesting.
Just like your, whoever owns across Boltsville world from you will have to be listed on here and as a budding neighbor.
Which, in my application, they're listed and I actually noted that they were on the other side because I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
It'll have to be shown on the updated map to our plot.
Yep. So I think we could probably get this through with the, with the, I think I was saying, we can get this through with the gift exception, but when, if we're going to defer wastewater permitting, you're going to have to come back to us when you have that.
Right, okay.
So we will have to amend it. So there will be an additional cost in a year or whenever you do this stuff to do it again, but it will be much narrower. It'll be, okay, it'll be like more precise access in the building, but the lots will be created at that point.
Okay.
But at that time, it'll be your lot.
But it will actually, you'll own it and you'll have a say.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of a tricky chicken in it, right? It's because it's not yours yet.
Right, like I said, we're trying to help my brother-in-law, at least in California, he wants to do this.
So that's, that's what we, I think.
Yeah, so what?
Do we agree that we can use the gift?
Yeah.
I don't see why not.
But we still.
I have a look at it carefully. We'll have a look at it carefully.
You should probably do, but even, even if they go through the gift that we're going to need is the wetland shown contours, they're going to have to have a new survey or new plat started.
Updated.
Yeah, updated plat.
With the access as a big one.
Access, signature block.
And lucky for you, these are things they don't need to be on site with the Theodolite for, or where's Total Station or whatever it is these days, GPS.
Right.
You can do from his seat, from his workstation, so.
Well, I have to bring up this.
Much cheaper if they don't have to come out.
Question, they already have access on a class four road. They have to show, and I know your intention is to do that, but from a subdivision point of view, this parcel has access.
We, but is that defined where the access is?
It just needs to be shown where the access is on the map.
We need an access permit from.
I think, I think technically it says it has to show the drive or the driveway.
Access permit.
That comes off the town road. It's not enough that there's frontage. It has to show down where you're going to.
Lisa's worried about where this is going to be and she doesn't know. He could show an access here and show.
Because there is an existing access.
Absolutely, good, yeah. I mean, if you don't want, that's what I was saying. I know just because you have a permit doesn't mean you have to use it, right? So to me, probably, my opinion, the, the easiest thing would be to say, here's an access I'm going to get permitted and here's an access I'm going to get permitted, but down the road when, because you don't have anything yet, which don't build, but when you're just like figuring out your site plan, how you're going to develop it, you say, well, actually, I'm going to have the surveyor figure out a good road here.
Right.
And then when you come back and say, I've got a house, I've got new wastewater permits, he's going to build here, I've got, you know, a septic round to go in.
This will end up being.
Well, that won't be your responsibility, but you probably need to deed to him an easement.
It'll be in the deed, there'll be an easement.
There you go. So the deed to easement will have to be essentially surveyed.
Right.
And when you do that, you bring it to us. But, but, but you're right, I think the easiest thing to do is just say, there, there it is.
So define the access that's here too.
I don't know.
You're going to have to come back later for that, for septic and air and a big full block, then you can put the driveway on.
Right.
Oh, you're sending.
If we're not asking for the whole driveway, we're just asking for like a.
I think that one, the cabin.
Andy?
This is the cabin access and I think that's right where it is. It's just not defined very well.
I think, I think the suggestion is get your surveyor to show an access on it. If you don't use it, it's never a problem. If you want to create a different one, you're going to come back to us at some point anyway when you're doing the wastewater and so forth, you can amend it then to show a different access. But just for the purpose of satisfying the checklist, show a spot. Show it and get it permitted by Bovee.
Right.
It's the, I mean, I'm trying to tell you, dude, but steering you in the direction, that's a lot easier.
Using the kids, for instance, we'll use what's there.
What's that?
Use the, use what's there.
Yeah, I mean, they're, like Jen said, I mean, if you drive up by there, there's already an access and I think that's what this is.
I remember, I, I used to go up to the cabin.
Yeah, it does.
It is helping you too because, you know, or not necessarily you, but if this were in the family, I'm pretty sure that you wouldn't want strangers coming through. Shared access drives are tricky, so I mean, if I was selling these, or if I was selling this one off and keeping this one, I would be like, yeah, go down the road.
And we're not 100% that he's going to, we're trying to figure out if we can buy the whole thing, like buy him out or something, get it, figure out something.
That would help you with your travel on the road situation.
Yeah.
Then you could, do you have somebody down here that needs access, the access is their parcel this way? Or do they all come through?
No, they own this side.
But if you owned both of these, I'm not telling you anything, this is just something. If you owned both of these, does anybody on this side access it solely this way?
I don't think there's anything developed out that.
You could, if you owned both of these.
Actually, you've got a problem right here.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying, in theory, just theoretical, if you owned both of these, you could petition the town to discontinue that.
But you have lots that are fronted on this side.
But, that's why I asked you, do they need this for access or no?
Probably.
Yes.
Okay, well, then if they do, you can't.
No, but we could gate at the bottom of ours.
Yeah, you could gate George.
Yeah, we can do that. Not that we want to be in hospital.
Did we get everything from your list?
When I had the squats, my answers, new survey.
There it is, that's what we're using.
It's important that Faith hears on this. You got this?
Yeah, I remember parts of that.
Contours, wetlands, drive, access permits.
I started a list and then I moved to a different. Contours, signature block, revision date, access from the town highway to be shown, internal access to be included, all the butters correctly ID'd. That's what I've got.
Contours?
Yeah, she said that. Wetlands, contours, they're going to be starting a new plat anyway. Signature block and the access points shown as well as updating the butters so that it correctly reflects what's there.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll get this updated, then we come back. Yes.
I think it's probably easier that way.
Yeah.
Come back and then we'll schedule a hearing.
Yeah, because I don't know how long it's going to take me to get ahold of Ethan and get that stuff done.
But it should be, and by then we'll.
You should be able to, be fairly easy.
We'll look into, we'll each individually in the next meeting, we'll talk about the gift exception. I don't have it in freshman, but I think, my guess is we can rely on that, so.
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Continue on.
I think that's it.
Be taken during.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
No, wait a second, there are some other things, right? So.
Upcoming meetings. I don't know if you've got anything on Cavendish subdivision.
No, I've never heard back and I think we're just not going to get anything. I, I, I'm, I'm super disappointed in our planning, our regional planning commission. I don't know if they really want this on the record, but I don't know what's going on. They don't help us very much. Cavendish got theirs written entirely by the regional planning commission. I don't know, I.
Well, I think.
So do we have often, we have, we have, there's usually three choices, right? So you either apply for a planning grant and you get some contractor to help you. That's an awful lot of work and then you have to like be a supervisor of a contractor and all that. I've done that a number of times the last few years. It is not easy.
Not fun.
Not fun or easy and I don't get paid for that work. So the regional planning commission sometimes can help out like they did for flood hazard stuff, but they haven't stepped forward to do that. Or we do it on our own and I think that we could do it on our own. I'll see if I'm back or not. So that is, so I'm up for reappointment, but I don't know what's going to happen with that yet, so we'll see. I think we can probably do it on our own.
Advertised after tomorrow's special site.
We'll see how that goes. I think we could do it on our own. I think we could copy a lot from Cavendish, but yeah, we'll see. Wasn't in your report, but did you want to say anything about the J O?
Well, there's been some discussion with Quinn and she took additional information that I had given, that you had given, but as yet.
Nothing back. She thought she would have something last week.
She did clarify that she will only be making her opinion based on things that have happened.
Have happened so far.
She cannot draw into that any projected ideas or unclarified thoughts or supposed plans from which there are no details.
Right. Did anyone see, someone totally out of the blue mentioned to me yesterday that they saw the store on the news this week? Did anybody say?
No.
Okay, well, I wasn't, yeah, that was totally out of the blue. They were like, oh, that I just saw on the news.
What news?
I, they could, they could.
Now, they had, they had Sider Day.
Something to do with the, the store and they mentioned the owners by name. This is not somebody that has any relation to, me in the town.
They had something on somebody was a channel, I forget what channel was up here for Sider Days.
Yeah, Channel 3.
And they were taking film, you know, they were, the press, but they may have gone around.